Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board to order. It is Thursday, January 14th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. This is a remote meeting. And in accordance with the governor's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 Novell coronavirus outbreak emergency. The January 14th, 2021 public meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, this meeting, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. Do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. And our first item on the agenda is a site plan review of 271 Bedford Street. Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers is here representing that project. At this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to you, Jamie, to present the project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Jamie Bissonnet and Zenith Consulting Engineers. Hope everybody's having a good night. If I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like to share my screen.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so this is 271 Bedford Street in Lakeville, Mass. This is the location for Southeast Fence. Southeast Fence is approximately this portion of the site right in here. And the applicant is proposing to construct a 30 by 50 storage building behind the site. This site plan looks a little bit more complicated because what we're doing is we're actually looking to remove existing pavement and construct this existing building so that we can conform to the current local zoning regulations. So we have approximately, I think somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or nine thousand square feet of asphalt area that's being removed here. The building itself is proposed over what is primarily asphalt area. Also included and part of this plan is we're going to have to remove this existing septic tank and install a new septic tank, which we're working with the Board of Health to permit as well. If I may, I'd like to go to the architectural plans.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. All right, so the architectural plans, again, this is a pretty simple structure. The intent for the building is to store fencing and gate materials for the Southeast Fence business. There is proposed two floors, the lower level with an upper level. Again, it's going to be set behind the existing building. But the purpose for this building, again, is storage. The floor plan is very, very simple. Storage upstairs, storage downstairs with a set of stairs that go up and down and a side door entry. And the lower garage door with a front door entry as well. The upstairs, that's kind of an overhead area, I believe, to allow delivery vehicles to be able to help put items up there as well if need be for storage. If I may, I'd like to go over, we also submitted a architectural narrative. The architect, Rescom, did the design on the building. They did go through the town of Lakeville's 7.6.3 design standards for the density, the 10% density bonuses. And we wanted to just kind of go over those with you. The first couple are not necessarily applicable due to the size of the building. The building is less than 100 feet in length and it's not a small retail store. This is definitely going to be storage only. But the detailed features, originally the plan had just had siding, clapboard shingles going the full length of the sides. The architect added in some trim pieces to create like a three bay approach using 12 inch projection ribs was the term. He also added trim to the bottom and the top to kind of enhance the aesthetics of the plan itself. Again, the roof characteristics with the 100 feet of building length didn't trigger. But they did go into the colors and materials. The plan itself has colors. The existing building that's there now, I think the colors are meant to match the existing building. If I may, the existing building is a sharp, nice looking building. You know, really fits in. It's got the cupolas up top, the nice farmer porch style with some architectural breaks for a nice storefront. I believe that the intention here is to keep a similar roof color and siding color so that it fits in nicely with the existing building. Also in the design narrative, they talk about some of the building materials and trim materials. So again, they're looking to match the color of the roof. They're looking to, exterior siding will be natural wood manufactured in the lap siding. So it will not be vinyl sided. And again, the trim colors will be creamed to match the existing building. Again, there's no entryway applicable for customers. It's a storage building only, so 7.6.3.6 was not applicable. And I'd be happy to try to address any questions or comments that you may have.
How long is the main plaza building?
How long is the plaza?
Yeah, and the reason I ask is, you know, as a planning board, we're kind of trying to close a loop here and granting a density bonus. And I feel like it's on the entire project. To, you know, and I'm not trying to have them redesign the building. It's just I want to know, is it 100 feet long?
No, the building appears that the frontage from this bound to over to the side is about a 200 foot run. I'm going to, I'm going to estimate that the building's got to be pretty close to 180 feet.
Right. So even though the proposed structure doesn't need to comply with some of those architectural standards in the bylaw, the existing front building, you know, I guess we're looking at that as well. I feel like the planning board's looking at this as the entirety of the project because we're granting or we're being asked to grant a density bonus based on the architectural appearance of the project on a whole. My feeling is it is an attractive building. The gable put on the front of the building and the farmer's porch do add architectural, the cupolas add architectural diversity that you, I think you could interpret do comply with the bylaw. So my concern would be visually how much of this proposed structure we can see from the road beyond that, which is, it looks like maybe a hint to the roof I went by today. The main existing building is probably about 20 feet high to the peak, maybe 19 feet?
I believe that, I believe that John Mulley, we spoke today. And I believe that he said roughly to the peak is somewhere around 200 inches in that vicinity, might be slightly higher. So we were figuring somewhere around 17 or 18 feet.
And the new building, based on the roof pitch, I think works out to about 26 feet? That sound about right?
That's correct. Yep, to the peak, it would be about 26 feet.
So realistically, we're probably not even going to see that from the road. If we were standing in front of the plaza, maybe from approaching from the south on Bedford Street, you may get a glimpse of it as you go past the building. I don't see any lights on this building. Are you going to be putting any lighting to light up the work area and his storage area?
I think in the back there now, there are presently lights on the building. You know, and so I'm sure that there will be some dark sky compliant lights components that are put in for when the days start getting shorter at the end of the, at the end of the year. You know, maybe even early spring. Around, you know, on the building itself in front of the doors. But, but I believe the majority of the lighting is already installed on site.
And as far as stormwater? You're removing a lot of pavement here to get down to the 70%? Are you just getting just under at 69 point something?
Yes.
Are you trying to catch the roof water off this and put it anywhere or is?
We, what we did was the, around this building presently is asphalt. And so by removing the amount of asphalt that we're doing, we know that we're creating a net reduction in runoff. There'll be more pervious surface to absorb water. So this will have a net benefit effect for drainage.
And to my knowledge, there's been no complaints of runoff in any of the other properties caused by this property? So that the current stormwater is handling what's existing?
That, yes, that's my understanding. I'm unaware of any issues or complaints. I know that John and his wife live out behind, behind the plaza. He also owns the next two buildings to the right hand side, or next two sites.
And that one slopes drastically towards him, so he's not shedding any water?
Correct. This water pitches, this pitches right down towards the plaza. That's correct.
Okay. Do any other board members have any questions or concerns that like the voice? Barbara?
No, I don't.
Peter?
Nope, I'm good. I like the fact that we're reducing the impervia, so I think it's a nice, nice looking building.
Thank you.
Michelle?
I think he's addressed all of my questions. I'm glad to see that the architectural drawings were included. I appreciate that, Jamie.
No, thank you.
And I'm not sure if we've got audio to Jack?
I'm here. I'm using the phone. Yeah, Jamie, I think the building looks nice. I have no, no problems.
All right, thank you.
So I have one other request.
Yes, sir.
To kind of keep in line with it being attractive, I'd request that the, I'm going to call it intermittent pile of free fence be removed from the very front of the property.
You're talking about where he puts the scraps for pickup out here?
Yeah.
So you'd like for him to move that pile from being there?
Even if it was just moved behind his display fences.
Okay.
If that was possible, I think that that would kind of really punctuate that it's great looking. It's the only thing that maybe doesn't look perfect over there. And where this is just an after the fact and there isn't a whole lot of landscaping as far as open space and that density bonus. I think that that would be just a good olive branch to have that pulled around back. Like I say, just, just behind the displays, just to get it off right on the edge of road.
I will, I will definitely talk to him about that. I, again, this, I haven't talked to him about that. I, I do know what you're talking about. I'll have to bring it up and, and make sure that that's something he's okay with.
And I understand that it probably wouldn't be taken if it was not seen. And it would be a giant pile and probably become an eyesore, but if, even if there was a way that it could become more orderly.
Okay.
And I'm not looking to, you know, have him make firewood bins and cut it into stove length. But it would be a nice gesture if he could do that.
All right, I will, I will talk to him and see what we can come up with.
Okay. If there's no other discussion by the board, I would make a motion to recommend approval of the site plan with the changes and grant a 10% density bonus for the architectural design and a 10% density bonus for the landscape. As long as any lighting that goes on to the structure or the new renovations is dark sky compliant.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. Have a great night.
You also.
Thanks, Jamie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie.
Next item on our agenda is master plan implementation update. Who's got that?
Well, I think, Mark, we're looking for two things. Number one, we want to make sure that we appoint somebody to the master plan implementation committee to replace zinc.
Okay, so that was a vacancy. We did talk a little bit before the meeting.
Yeah.
Jack, is that something you would be interested in?
Sure. I'd be glad to.
So is there any other discussion about Jack taking that position?
My only, my only request, Jack, is that you're new to town, so I would just request that is homework for preparation for being a part of this committee that you review the resident surveys that are available on the public website, the Lakeville website, and make sure that you're familiar with what the community has been asking for. Because most of that stuff is captured within master plan, but as we implement it, we need to make sure we're consistent with what the community is desiring.
Okay, will do.
Mark, so do we want to make a motion to, I'll make a motion to appoint Jack Lynch to the master plan implementation committee?
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye, aye.
Here?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. Jack will be our new master plan representative for the planning board.
Thank you.
One of the other, before we move on from the topic, Mark, I just want to make sure that, you know, we have a methodology for communicating with other, with particularly the master plan implementation committee. Most of, most of the things that are on that list are dependent on planning board to implement. As you know, as an example, is our fee structure, which we've been working on getting into place. And I think where the planning board has that on our schedule to look at master plan implementation once a month, I'd like to make a request that we make it standard process to have Kathy send an update on our master plan implementation progress to that committee as well as the Board of Selectmen so they understand what our progress is, that we are making progress on the implementation. So I'd like to make a motion that we make that a standard practice.
Second that. Oh, Michelle beat me to it. So Barbara had a motion, Michelle had a second. So all in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously that we will give a monthly update that will be circulated amongst other boards. Is there a specific list, Barbara, that you would like to see that go to?
I guess it's going to be depend on topic, but definitely master plan implementation and board of selectmen at a minimum. So those two would be the standard. And then I guess if, if any of the other topics touched anybody else, we'd want to make sure they were included as well.
Okay, thank you. So is that, do you have anything else for master plan, Barbara?
No, sir.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the Development Opportunities District. I'd like to push that back in our hearings to lump it together because we've, we've had that on the agenda for some time now. I'm going to just briefly talk about it, then we'll go through the item number five. But item number six on the agenda tonight is to discuss possible warrant articles for a public hearing in February to be for the Springtown meeting. And I think that we're going to push the Development Opportunities District discussion to that section tonight as part of a possible warrant article. So if everybody's all right with that, I'm going to jump into item five is review the zoning board of appeals petitions. Does anybody have any problem with moving the DO district discussion?
No. Fine.
Okay. Did everybody get a chance to go through the ZBA petitions that are in front of us for items five, A, B, C, and D?
Yes.
So on five A, Bedford Holdings, 33 Bedford Street, that appears to be signed for a mobile station.
Right.
On, I'm assuming that's the old A-frame building property.
I think it's a gas station across the way.
No, yeah, I think it's already existing.
Yeah, because there was an accident there.
Is that Joe's Gas?
Yeah.
Okay. So do we have any discussion about that sign? Do we want to make any recommendations?
My two cents is that I, I hate the signage and I would love to see a signage bylaw be in place. But that having been said, we don't, I don't think we have one in place right now.
Well, we have a sign bylaw.
We do, but it's not to, you know, it's, I don't know.
They're obviously asking for relief from the ZBA because it exceeds the zoning bylaw. Do you want to make a recommendation that this sign comply with the zoning bylaw and they not get relief?
I would like to make a recommendation that it, it does not get relief and it stays in compliance with our existing laws because I think it's important that the community wants to maintain our rural character. And anything like, any, any big, large signs like this continue to diminish the rural character of our community. So I'd like to see, I'd like to see that be denied.
Would anybody else like to add to that?
I think she hit it right on the head.
Yeah.
So.
Mark, I can, I, I agree with Barbara for the most part, but not really about the sign. I think that, you know, it's a business in a business district and, you know, there's what, two gas stations in town that I know of. And I don't really, I don't want to set a precedent that people get bigger and bigger signs. But at the same time, you know, a company should be able to put up or at least apply for with the ZBA what they want to do. And my personal motion is, is no comment, but I'll let Barbara's motion continue, you know?
So I'm just doing some quick math here on this, just so we have perspective on what they're asking. I believe that there are two things that they're asking relief on. And one of the, I'll read from the sign bylaw in a minute, is the projection of five feet in one direction. That's not permitted. And then the overall square footage of the sign. So the current bylaw allows for a 32 square foot sign and they're asking for a 51 square foot sign. And projection. I have it out because it's possibly on our discussion later. All pre-standing signs shall project more than two feet horizontally from its means of support. So currently that sign projects five feet and however many inches. Five foot.
Two point three, yeah.
That's two and 13 sixteenths. And so that's only allowed to be 24 inches by the law, by the bylaw. So they're looking for two points of relief. Basically, the sign being almost double the allowed size and that projection is over double the projection. So could you repeat your motion, Barbara?
My motion is I'd like to recommend to the ZBA that this plan as it currently is presented is not approved. If, if it was reduced in compliance with our existing bylaw, no problem with it.
So a motion to request the zoning board appeals to have the sign comply with the town's bylaw?
Correct.
Do we have a second on that?
A second?
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
I'm going to abstain from that. Or.
You want to be opposed? Opposed means you're opposed. Abstained means you agree with it.
No, then I oppose.
Okay.
And Barbara has very good points. The overall, this is a, this is a very large sign. But to say that the only sign we will ever look at is one that meets the guidelines, I think that's a bit, a bit tight, you know, a little tough to meet. So.
Yep.
You're saying it's either going to be 19 feet, well, this one's at 17 feet, two inches by like six feet. It's a huge sign or it's going to be miniature because our existing guidelines are pretty small.
Well, hopefully ZBA will come back and compromise and they'll implement something much smaller.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that our existing towns bylaws are pretty small. We allow for what would be the equivalent of a full sheet of plywood.
That's big.
Is that's, that's our, allowed for one business. And if there's two businesses, it could be two sheets of plywood. So we do allow pretty big signage to say that. I mean, might me personally, I don't care about the projection of the sign from the post. But if you wanted to make the square footage of the sign more in compliance than what's there, I think that's not unreasonable to say sheet of plywood should get you point across in Lakeville. But it's, you know, and I have no problem with you opposing it either, Peter. We shouldn't always all have the same opinions.
Exactly.
And, you know.
Going to oppose and just, I'm going to watch what the ZBA does with it just for curiosity. Because I know they just spent a great deal of time on signs for the corner property on Bedford Street. So I guess we'll see.
Hey, Barbara, if they've reduced the size of the mobile sign, would that satisfy our needs?
I'm going to leave that, I'm going to, I'm going to leave that up to ZBA. My position is the less signage, the better. I would like to see our community really try to focus on low lighting and smaller signage. I don't want to interrupt business, but plenty of communities have stricter signage rules than us and their businesses are doing just fine. I think everybody in our community knows where Joe's Gas is and their business is doing just fine. So extending the rules on their behalf, I don't see a benefit to the community and that's why I made that, that, that motion. Have we finished our vote on that, Mark?
We haven't. Jack? Your vote?
Sure.
You're, you're in support of Barbara's motion?
Yes.
Okay. I'm a little torn. I would. Well, put it this way, I support your motion. But I would also consider granting relief on the projection of the sign. I just, I think that 32 square feet is sufficient, but I'm not hung up on two foot projection that the bylaw reads. So when we pass along, so comply with the bylaw, I wouldn't care if the sign had the same design with the side projection instead of two posts. Because that's all they need to do is make it comply with two posts. But anyway, we made a motion, we voted, motion carried with a majority.
Okay.
Get that, Kathy? You are so muted.
Okay.
So did you get it?
Are you in favor?
I, I was in favor of Barbara's motion. Moving on. Vermont, five Ash Street. Any comments on that one? That looks like a residential, I think setback thing and usually we don't make comment on those.
That would be my motion. Peter, what do you think?
Second.
I'm going to try and lump those. Vermont and Chapin and Chapin, 41 Clark Road and 31 Pilgrim Road.
Yep.
I think they're all similar, no? I mean, I didn't delve into those too far. I was more on the mobile thing.
They're fine.
Yep.
So a motion to make no comment on five Ash Street. Uh, so a motion to make no comment on Five Ash Street, Forty-One Clark Road and Thirty-One Pilgrim Road.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. No shape, no comment on Vermont, Chapin and Chapin. Sounds like a lawful.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so number six on the agenda is to discuss par, possible warrant articles for a public hearing in February. So Kathy, this requires specific time to advertise. Uh, notice of time and place of such public hearing. I had some concerns about this as well because of the, uh, closed meetings and the specific requirements for drafting zoning amendments. I don't know if it's something that we have a public hearing. I'm just gonna read this from the, the, uh, handout that you got for us for zoning amendment changes. And notice of the time and place of such public hearing of the subject matter sufficient, sufficient for identification and of the place where text and maps thereof may be inspected, shall be published in the newspaper of general circulation in the city or town once in each of two subs, uh, successive weeks. It goes on to say just wanna, I didn't highlight everything, but I know there's more. I think something needs to be posted in the town hall as well, which is not accessible. So I guess we just wanna clarify the posting process for a, a public hearing to amend the zoning bylaw if to make sure it's COVID compliant, you know? Just wanna make sure we get it right. So if we do schedule something like that, you know, I guess we're relying on you to post that for us, Kathy, and to make sure that it meets the requirements.
When it's, um, when it goes in the newspaper, then Lil would post that ad within the town hall. So I can check with her to see exactly how that would be done now.
Yeah, just because the town hall's closed and I would assume that it would need to go on the town's website. At least that would seem like the most logical answer to say that the to, whole town can see it then. And all the people that, uh, subscribe to the emails from the town would receive it. So very good. Uh, I'm gonna make a recommendation that if we do and we should, uh, have a public hearing for some, uh, warrant articles. We need to clean up some things in the bylaws and we need to adopt FEMA flood maps that we should post the public hearing for February eleventh.
Mark, we need to get in touch with, um, the town council as well to make sure that they're available to review, to help us with the, uh, final bylaw language. I believe the date for submission is March seventh to, um.
Yep, we have a letter from the, uh, selectmen's office.
Yep.
In accordance with the town's bylaws, please submit any articles for the town's annual, uh, meeting warrant by Monday, March eighth.
March eighth, okay.
Four P.M.
Okay, so we just need to give town council a heads up that we're gonna be having our public hearing on the, the eleventh because that's less than a month.
So Kathy, do you have something?
All right, so if you wanted to have on the eleventh, I would have to the ad would have to go in on the fourth and the twenty-eighth. And I would actually have to get that to the newspaper next Tuesday.
Okay. We have to do it because we have to have that stuff back for, uh.
Let me ask this procedurally. If we had that public hearing, can we continue it to the next meeting as well if we didn't finish that business?
As I know you can.
Date specific, if we said, you know, we need to continue this hearing until the February eighteenth. Planning board meeting.
I, I don't know, like, on a zoning bylaw, if you can, that, I'm, I haven't had that situation yet, so.
Well, I think we need to do it on February fourth anyway because if we don't, if we had to make a change and we needed the eighteenth, if we don't meet again until after March eighth.
Mark.
Two meetings in February to do this and we need to do it.
So Mark, I thought you would say, were saying you wanted the meeting to be on the eleventh. You saying?
I was.
Okay. And Kathy has to notice by the fourth and the twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth of February, uh, twenty-eighth of January.
January, right.
Fourth of February.
Correct. A week before. Okay, so that would be the, the eleventh.
So, okay, let's keep this official and accurate that I would like to make a motion to have a public hearing with a planning board to adopt the new FEMA flood maps that have been presented by the state.
I'll second that motion on March for, uh, February eleventh.
At seven P.M. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously so that we will, on February eleventh have a public hearing for the FEMA flood maps. Okay, so continuing on with warrant article discussion. We've discussed it tonight. We've discussed sign regulations. You know, Barbara has expressed her displeasure with the sign bylaw and it could be cleaned up. I agree with that and we should have a public hearing on that same night to discuss amending Lakeville's sign regulations.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to ha, ha, have a public hearing on amending Lakeville sign regulations. All in favor?
Aye.
Barbara, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack, myself. Everybody, it's unanimous. We'll have a public hearing to amend sign regulations. The next thing that I think that we should have for discussion and public hearing on February eleventh is in Lakeville's zoning bylaw, section six point seven, site plan review. Uh, specifically language in six point seven point two, the procedure for business or industrial that trigger a site plan review. I think that we need to amend that language. Uh, so I'd like to make a motion to have a public hearing to amend the language in six point seven point two of the zoning bylaw.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
Myself. Motion carries unanimously. There was one other thing, Barbara, what?
Development opportunity districts, the overlay.
Yep, alright.
That's the most, yeah.
We bumped that one back. So that is something, and we have a lot of work to do on that one still. We've talked about, um, possibly trying to create a radius from a highway ramp or all of the closest highway ramps to make it more palatable for business development and not create traffic in the center of town. Um, we've tried to come up with property-specific locations to change the overlay to a specific zone. So there is some homework with that. I don't wanna just gloss over it and everybody come to the meeting on all of these items. We need to work between now and then. Uh, and I, I wanna go back to the drafting zoning amendments handout. There's a specific section in that on page eighteen. Things you shouldn't, shouldn't do as far as good practice. The third item is get input from your town council, uh, as early as possible. At a minimum, they need to review the draft before it's scheduled for public hearing. Prior to public hearing, we need to send something to councils, um, on all of these items. I think the FEMA firm flood maps is probably a simple, Kathy, could you send that entire document that was circulated to Amy Questle to get any recommendation on, do we have to put language in that specific to the town?
In that, but in order to advertise this, I would need the language by, like, next, like, the nineteenth.
Okay. So, uh, the draft language. The, the FEMA flood map, uh, adopting?
The language, the final draft.
Okay, so that's a little bit unrealistic, Mark, don't you think? The nineteenth?
Maybe for development opportunities, but not for the other ones.
Okay. Um.
Well, isn't the FEMA thing a document that was sent to us by the state?
There, there's, there's not, it, it's just, we're just agreeing to adopt what's, we don't have a choice. I mean, we adopt what they have. We don't have the option to amend it.
Is, is that something that, I'd have to look back at my email quite a ways. Somebody have, uh, that saved, that they could send it to Kathy so that she would have that FEMA thing?
Yep. Uh, I guess the question also is, okay, so I'll send Kathy the FEMA flo, FEMA flood language. Okay. Yep, I have that. I can do that. I, you know, it does, I, I guess one of the things about the FEMA flood map adoption is, that does concern me is I do wanna make sure that anybody, that, that anybody, there's not a mechanism by which, um, people that, whose properties will be affected will be notified. And it's not that they, there's really gonna be a choice cuz if we don't take advantage of this, we're gonna lose the ability to buy flood insurance through FEMA. So like, this is a no-brainer. We have to do it. However, I do feel like the people who, whose properties will be affected and, and could affect both financeability and insurability of the property, they need to know that their property is being affected. So if we have the map, the before and after, is there, you know, do we think that it's worth it to, to publish that someplace? Maybe, maybe with the, maybe with the meeting minutes or with the, uh, public hearing notice?
On the website?
Mm-hmm.
Or at least a link to the document?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, so I would say if you could email that document to Kathy so she has it for the posting, I will retype and send you what I have for the, uh, six point seven point two.
Okay.
Which I think is replace a paragraph with a newly drafted paragraph, just to change. And I, I think that I'll individually circulate that to each board member so that, uh, we, we don't wanna discuss it in private, in, in a meeting-type forum. Let's say you have it in case you wanted to try and amend. But I think that we could probably put something together, even if that are, what did you say you needed all for, Kathy?
She needs the language by the eighteenth. It's Friday, next Friday. No, it's the eighteenth is a Monday.
Read it two weeks before it goes in the paper?
Like, they need it the nineteenth and then she usually would, um, have the draft back to me by the twentieth. So if I have it to her Tuesday, she could, she'll have it back to me Wednesday. So I can check it and make sure it's okay and then it'll go in on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, but you need ten days to do that?
Yeah.
Are we looking at the right? We're talking about January twenty-eighth. You, you're needing it ten days prior, the twenty-eighth. Does it take that long or the, are they?
It's usually, shit, I've, I can get it in on Wednesday, but you know, she likes to have it. If, if we have to, we can do it on the Wednesday. But I usually go the day before, so.
Okay.
But definitely by the Wednesday.
So w- worst case, and I, again, I'll take care of what I think needs to happen for six point seven point two uh, for site plan review. Uh, FEMA flood maps, let's just send the document to her.
Yep.
And then as far as, uh, the sign bylaw, Barbara, do you think you could make any amendments or changes? Maybe send it to me and then get something in the next two or three days so that
Yep.
you have something in there for that? And then if we can't get something done in the meantime, when do we need? If Kathy, if we wanted to try to do development opportunities district on the twenty-fifth of February, up to a public hearing then? Need that information by February first? So you get it done for the third?
Yeah, I could take it like the second. The Tuesday would be okay. February second.
Mark, doesn't, does, doesn't council have to have time to review this though before Kathy puts in the public notice?
Yep.
So we're gonna have to get this stuff out to them right away, whatever we're proposing. So.
And, and it, so if we can't get it done, where, where you really need to shoot for second meeting in February?
Okay.
No, I, I, I want us to try as hard as we can. I'd rather continue a public hearing than miss the opportunity.
Absolutely. Okay. So if I send you, for example, the suggested revisions on the sign bylaw, will you forward the, will you make your comments and then send those back to council right away, the same day? Or we just, I don't know what their turnaround time is. I don't know what to expect.
Amy Questle is pretty good. I mean, something like that, she might need twenty-four hours, maybe a little bit longer, but.
All right, that's nothing.
As long as we don't, I don't, if we sent it Friday afternoon.
Yeah, but it, it's not two weeks. Okay, cool. That's fine. If it's not gonna take two weeks, that's fine.
I don't think so.
Awesome, okay.
Um, so something else I wanted to touch on. We keep getting asked about giving a budget for the selectmen on what the planning board needs. And I've had some discussions. And I think Kathy, can you help us if we made a formal budget request to obtain information from somebody in town hall that knows that information? There's a person that knows exactly how much the planning board takes in, in fees, and how much the planning board spends annually on either uh, peer reviews or legal fees or anything like that?
It's a town accountant, right?
Yeah, he knows what we take in. As far as the legal fees, I feel like that would be the selectmen. I don't know if they break it down by the department.
Well, I just, they, they're asking us to come up with a budget. We don't know what gets spent annually already, so it's kinda tough for us to generate a budget if we don't even know what comes in and what goes out.
Kathy, doesn't someone in the town know what, uh, our expenses are?
Well, the, to Kathy's point, I know legal fees are always, they always go through the board of selectmen. So maybe that's not something we're gonna request, but it would be nice to know what gets spent on legal fees for the planning board. That being said, I think at least if we knew what was collected in fees and what was spent in other administrative costs, whether it be, uh, peer reviews and things like that. And that's another, what gets brought in through house accounts on peer review information.
Do you have a record of, of peer reviews? What, what you've taken in and what's gone out?
Your audio is tough.
So you go closer.
I have a record of peer review, what the board has spent on peer review. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
So, so my two cents on this is that, uh, government budgeting and business budgeting. So so my two cents on this is that government budgeting and business budgeting always seem to be very different. And in the business world, what happens is you, you know, you create a budget and then you get like a monthly statement that says you're either on budget or you're off budget and here's why. And I feel like the way that we have, the way information, we don't, we haven't had, we don't have any information being fed back to us. But it would be certainly nice to have that comparison. I don't know that we're going to get it, but. Mark, are you, you're asking this because we just want to have some visibility onto our expense center? Our cost center? As an, as a, as a, as a division of the town?
Sorry, I lost audio for some reason for a minute.
Your question is related to wanting to have visibility about our particular cost center within the town?
Yeah, you know, couple that with, we're trying to adjust our planning board, the fees that we charge or the rates.
Yeah.
We have no idea, there's a lot of moving parts to, how do we know what to factor for? If we wanted to hire environmental partners to do oversight on a project that wasn't necessarily passed along to the applicant? If it was more administrative help?
So I I believe that the board of selectmen is adding an line, budget line item, there was some discussion about that on Monday's meeting. The difference is for the expense that they're talking about would be an expense, not a pass through. Wouldn't be like a peer review where you just pass it through to the developer, be a town expense for having a planner consultant. I know that they're supportive of us calling those consultants and we've talked about doing it, so maybe that's
So does anyone have any recommendations? And if we're gonna, I like the term you just used to say consulting fees that, you know, maybe end up being paid by the town or the board, not a pass through. Do we want to recommend an amount and just recommend something?
I feel like with the amount of stuff we have going on, I think 30 to $40,000, I let's go with $40,000 for an annual budget is is a reasonable starting spot. We really don't have any idea what it's going to be, but we have a lot of things going on this year. It'd be so great to be able to just say, yes, we need, we need to have, you know, a consult at the next hearing or the next meeting. And so that we had some feedback, you know, for things that we need support on.
Are we ever challenged by the selectmen as to our expenses and where you, how they could tell that we spend too much money? Or, I mean, I'm new to this, so I don't know.
Yeah, no, this is actually new for us, Jack, we've been talking about hiring a planner for like 20 years. And I think the reality is, is that fiscal budgets, you know, may come into under some additional pressure going into 2022. And the idea of hiring a full time planner at, say, a fee of 85 or $90,000 a year, and I don't really know what they make, I'm just throwing that out there. That it would be a better, more palatable solution for us to start with a consultant and kind of see what we needed. Because I don't even know if the town needs a full time planner, but we need more than we have right now, we need something more than we have and something less than the maximum, you know what I mean? So the my my figure, Mark and everybody else is really just us, just a throwing a figure out there, but.
I agree with the 40 grand.
Yeah.
I I think that's a good number to say. When a site plan comes in or a subdivision, you send it to somebody and just say, give us your thoughts, write something up, just like Nick Lane he used to do.
Yep.
So when we go to a meeting like tonight, just say, for example, Jamie's project that he presented tonight, send it over and try to give the background of it to this consultant and just get a letter in feedback. And if that's 500 or $1,000 per and it's, what do we have? Probably about 22 meetings a year in a normal year, maybe 20 to 22.
Yeah, we're not going to, we're not going to, we're not going to spend all the money, but if we needed them to show up to hearings and stuff, it could be extra.
If you, if you had two reviews per meeting and there were a thousand bucks apiece, you'd be right around 40 grand.
Okay, there you go.
I mean, you folks know the dollar value better than I do, but my only comment would be that having been in the corporate world my whole life, I had to live within a budget the whole time I was working. And I think it's good for us to know what our costs are and where, you know, from year to year to see whether we're, you know, much more this year than we were last year and why is that? And maybe some of these consultants are too expensive for us, maybe we should go to somewhere different.
Yep, so I, yeah, you're right, Jack. And I I think to help you understand too, as to Barbara's point earlier, we've been putting in the budget, I should say, we've been requesting a budget for a town planner of $80,000 for 10 years. And it hasn't happened. So I think to Barbara's point, let's just put in 40 grand, not expect the person to come with it, but we can go find a person as a mercenary from project to project to say, you like working with this guy, Kathy, when the site plan comes in and you circulate it to all the department heads, send it to that guy too.
Yep, and I think the board of selectmen will be in support of that, I really do, I think they would. They're going to be comfortable.
I I think, I think it's budget season and we need to come up with something, right Kathy? I I think a reasonable thing is to come up with, I I would recommend that we recommend to the planning board as a motion for a $40,000 consulting budget.
I'll make that decision. Sorry, Jack.
I just would think that, I would think the selectmen would be satisfied that we're being fiscally responsible.
Well, and it's, it's not ours to spend if we don't spend it, we're trying to, they'll create a budget and if we don't use it, it'll go back into the fund.
Right.
And they're very supportive of us right now to make sure that, you know, there's plenty of oversight and engineering help to review all disciplines of a project that we may overlook. So made a motion, Barbara, did you second that?
Second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor to recommend a $40,000 budget for consulting for the planning board. Barbara, Peter?
Aye.
Shell?
Aye.
Jack, can I see your hand? So motion carries unanimously. I have one thing that I was, it was brought to my attention during the week and I have a letter here. It's not on the agenda, so I'm going to consider it part of new business. And it's really just to kind of take the temperature of the board. The Dollar Tree. The owner is now the applicant for a building permit. That I guess he has a potential tenant to take up this vacant space that was originally approved as a restaurant. I guess I'm going to read his letter and then maybe we can give some background, he sent me a letter today, I will circulate it to the board, but he says, dear planning board members, as of today, I have become aware of a planning board regulation that requires site plan review or any building permit that is applied for, that involves work in excess of 1,500 square feet on a commercial property. Our goal is to take an existing 2,800 square foot tenant space and install a demising wall that will create a total of two tenant spaces, one space would be 1,500 square feet and the other would be 1,300 square feet. The outdoor parking lot area would remain unchanged, including no proposed changes to parking lot lighting. Our work is specific to the interior of the space with the exception of adding an entry door in a location that presently is a window. Any proposed signage would of course meet the town's requirements. The intent of my letter is to request a waiver of site plan review for these tenant space improvements. He would appreciate that consideration, that's from the applicant. Peter, I believe you were on the board when that building was originally site planned reviewed. And I'm, I'm told that was originally approved for a restaurant space with a bar and some other stuff.
I hadn't heard of a bar, that's the first I heard of it, and that was originally going to have a drive through window on its, on its far end as you're looking at it on the left hand side, but they knew at the time that they were going to need special permit for a drive through. But they did say that that was the eventual plan, I I never heard of a bar, but I can tell you, I would not be in favor of waiving a site plan review just by saying, oh, we're just going to add a door because now you're taking one building, you're turning it into three essentially, is that, is that correct?
Well, you're taking, well, my understanding, and I wasn't there, my understanding is they always set aside one space that was like 2,800 square feet out of the total of, I think, 12,000 square feet. So roughly Dollar Tree is almost 10,000 square feet.
Right, that's right.
And then this left hand side of the building is roughly 2,800 square feet. And he has a tenant that does not need all 2,800 square feet. So he's going to turn, I guess, that into two spaces, but he's only going to fill one of them at this time.
So I'm going to support what Pete had talked about, and I think the issues come up before with site plan review in terms of use. I, I mean, it's not on our agenda to cover this, but I don't, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily be in support of waiving it either.
Okay, so it is not a change of use?
Understood, but it's a change of, it's a change of a part, it's repartitioning a space bigger than 1,500 square feet. So if we don't have site plan review, do we, do, are we sure that it's going to meet all the other requirements for the town? Other than, I mean, we're just, just a wall and a door? Sprinklers and you, I don't know.
So
What would we look at? The harm would be in site plan review, is it timing wise, do they have a timetable that they just can't get to us? I mean, we meet every week, so it's a.
No, I, so that's my thoughts with the 6.7.2 applicant for a building permit for new construction or modification of or addition to a business or industrial structure resulting in a floor area of over 1,500 square feet in aggregate shall submit six copies of site plan as described here into the town clerk, 21 days, so on. Using a couple of examples, there was, and I'm not going to get the address right, but I'm going to say it was on Commercial Drive or something, there was like a 11,000 square foot renovation inside that building. And we didn't look at it, we had no desire to look at it. And it was a change in tenant, and I think it was a change in use from office space to a business that they, they did some sort of work with autistic children. So we decided not to look at that one.
When was that, Mark? To Commercial, I'm trying to think, was that the, is it Red Building?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
I'm probably wrong on Commercial Drive.
Okay.
It's up toward the train station, probably on one of the streets like where the post office.
Oh, I know where you are, no, yes, no, it was by the EPA building, yeah, Masti EP building, yeah, I remember that.
And
It was office to office, that was the argument, that was the discussion at that time, they were using it, they were repartitioning it and it was, the use was not changing, so you're saying this is the same case, we don't have the use changing?
I remember the, I remember the, the, the lady who came in for that, for the autistic school, you know? She had, she had a school up and running already, if I, if I remember right.
Something like that.
In it, maybe another town or another spot and she was moving it to here, so I I don't recall why we didn't do a site plan review, it just, it probably didn't, we didn't think it needed it, but I tend to think this Dollar Tree should get it, it's you know, what if he said, oh, I have 2,800 square feet and I want to make each one 1,000 square feet and put three on the side? You know, when would we say, hey, stop for a second, let's just look, you know? Can't hurt.
I'm definitely in agreeance with this, I would hate to approve something sight unseen and and then have it fall on our lap for why did this appear here all of a sudden in town in a already contested location?
I mean, I agree, I think, you know, we should protect the interests of the town and make sure, do a site review to make sure it conforms to all the town requirements.
Yeah, I mean, Mark, if you don't mind me asking, like, did they have, like, are they going to get an additional dumpster? Are they going to get, you know, are they going to have a door that they're going to load through, you know? I know no additional parking is what they're saying, I'm just, I just, I'd like to see it in advance rather than just saying, yeah, do what you want, so.
Yep, okay, well, yep, I, I, I understand. So I guess my next question is where it is entirely complete and he's saying that they're not doing anything outside. Would we say that that's a minor site plan review or a major?
I would say minor, as far as fees and titling it, it's minor.
Okay.
Unless, unless anyone else thinks differently.
No, I mean, like I said, I'm just kind of taking the temperature on it because I would assume, and again, I wasn't there, I haven't looked at the site plan originally. But my understanding is it was approved for a restaurant, it just never got built out. And so it's really more, it looks to me like a more of a matter of two years have passed or more since original construction, and that's sort of what brings it back, because if he did this all at once, it would have been just an over and done with, and we wouldn't have looked at it, but that's fine, I just.
Well, there is a difference, the difference is it was only going to be two spots and now it's going to be three. I do see that as a little bit more different than just saying two years have passed, you know?
Yeah, well, we, yeah, I guess the thing of that is what is the third space then?
He, he must be doing more than just a door, I mean, now each space is going to have its own bathrooms, they, or are they going to share the bathrooms with Dollar Tree or?
I don't know, I haven't seen plans.
I'm just curious as well.
Well, the other thing too, Mark, is we had a lot of, a lot of input from the public about traffic and whether the trucks were going to go in there and how they were going to turn around and the lighting and all of that kind of stuff, so if, depending on the use to what the tenant, I do recollect exactly what Pete had said, that it was designed to be considered for a drive through. And I think that was how we looked at the parking and the traffic flow and so forth was on that basis. So, I don't know, I agree, I'd like to see it come back through site plan review.
Okay, so I'll let them know, but you guys are fine with it being a minor site plan review as far as the fees and everything, so.
Yeah, I think.
No problem, I don't have an opinion either way, I just, you know, again, I think that that's one of the things in the bylaw that we kind of need to clean up is this, what triggers in the 1,500 square feet, and I guess and again, to not to diminish it, Peter, but if you had a 1,500 square foot space and you just kind of renovated it, it was a florist and the florist went out of business and then you renovated it and another florist moved in, it was a different company. Technically, by the bylaw, that triggers site plan review.
Yeah, I agree, it does, and I'm sure.
But there's no reason that we would need to look at that if they didn't change any doors, nothing outside changed and it was
Right.
the same exact type of business that was approved originally.
Correct.
So I guess it, to that point, and I, maybe this is a bad example because it sat and now he's dividing it not in half. But the remaining space would be small enough that it would not warrant site plan review and that may trigger more foot traffic with three spaces than two, I don't know, because I'm sure square footage wise, there's so many engineers with so many formulas. You're only going to be able to fit so many people into a 1,400 square foot space and then the remaining 1,300 square foot space or whatever it is or 15 and 13 would still only allow. would still only allow the occupant load to max out at a certain point, the parking. So, anyhow, I'll let him know, he's going to do a minor site plan review. That's that, what else do we have? Warrant articles. Talked about budget. I think that's it. Does anyone else, anyone else have anything that they'd like to bring up? Michelle?
Um, just under, for old business, the recodification. That's, that is starting back up again, so we're going to have a quick meeting next week and hopefully I'll have some updates on on what's going to happen with that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, update from Serpide Cannabis Control Commission is now caught up in processing applications in five to seven days. So no more delays on the government side, it's only on the applicant side. And looks like vaccines are going to be accelerating very quickly, but I don't want to get into those details because I don't really know exactly. That, I don't, I don't have, I don't have it from a more official source. So, but it looks like the vaccine process is going to pick up.
Very good. So our next meeting is going to be on February twenty-eighth at seven PM.
January twenty.
I'm sorry, yeah, you're right, and I'm sorry, that, that's our next regularly scheduled planning board meeting is January twenty-eighth, and we do have our forty-three Main Street meeting on January twenty-first at seven PM. Which will only be that business. I think that concludes tonight's meeting. Did we miss anything, Kathy? Is it me or is it just her audio?
It's her audio.
I think it's, I think it's her audio.
Yell, yell Kathy. Well, you look happy. Oh, we heard you laugh, we heard that. Nope. Okay. Nothing.
I think she said motion to adjourn.
Write it on paper and hold it up. I think she's going to. No.
Will, Mark, will Jamie's plans be available to sign on Monday? Could, does Kathy know they'll be in the available to sign on Monday?
You can nod on that one, Kathy. Okay, Peter, I was by on I don't know, Monday or Tuesday this week and signed a bunch of stuff, looks like you had some other stuff to sign as well. Jack, it looked like you had to go back to.
I'll be in Monday morning, I'll tell, I'll do all of it then.
Okay, I think you had to go by Michelle also.
Yeah, yeah, I have, I, I haven't been back since she was out, so.
Yeah, you, you, Jack, you signed some of the first pages of one of the things, but unfortunately, there was like all fifteen pages had a signature block in one of the plans. So Kathy will reach you on it, but when you get a chance.
Okay, I'll go tomorrow.
Thank you. I mean, sure you go before noon, Jack, because I think the sound hall closes.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'll be there.
Is that accurate, Kathy? Sound hall closes noon and you'll be there at, up until. Will you be mad if I do a motion to adjourn, Kathy, because we couldn't hear you? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Michelle has.
Oh, wait. Send something out for prime late, do you want me to vote on agenda for next meeting? From prime engineering?
Oh, that's the, the email that she sent earlier today. Yeah, I think that's reasonable to add that, Mark, that was, there was a last minute request and we just basically said it's too late if we got it at five o'clock or something. It's a review of a pa- of a, a case that came before us some time ago and they're just adding, asking to be back on the agenda, so Kathy wants to know if it's okay to add for our meeting on the twenty-eighth. I'm okay with that, adding it, I just.
One other thing, Kathy. Mike O'Shaughnessy reached out to me regarding Riverside Drive and some of the changes that we voted on, and he's going to be coming back to us to revisit that, because the selectmen sent it back, because there was an issue, and I'm not fully sure what the issue was, but the selectmen won't approve it. There was a mistake made. But I think it was there were multiple components that created the mistake between a lack of communication back from DHCD and maybe some aggressive movement forward without that approval, it got accepted. So anyway, I don't want him on the agenda for the next meeting, if he comes in, I'd like it to be on the February meeting. And possibly have town council involved. That's why maybe when we're doing the public hearings, we could schedule that, if we could get Amy Questle to be involved for both hearings. Yes, that is for P A N. Is that enough information for you to get that ball rolling? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, if you wanted to do, well I guess it depends on what's on the agenda and how bulky the planning board agenda is that night. If we wanted to do that after or open the planning board meeting, I just don't want it to be one of those ones where we start that and it turned into an hour-long, fifteen-minute meeting. I would rather go through the planning board public hearings and at the end, maybe open that up. So we, we can communicate about that, but I think the priority would be to make sure that we have either council present or we need to be prepared to have council to have a response, but I would prefer council to be present because they have an attorney present, so I think it'd only be wise for us to have an attorney present. So again, that would be in our first meeting in February, not the January, next January meeting, please. So I think that covers everything. So motion to adjourn.
A second.
Have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.